Call this meeting to order. John, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ann, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Gerber.
All right, here.
Mrs. Boring, Ms. Janice Zerker, Mr. Reiner, Mayor Lecliter.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Saleh.
Here.
Very good, thank you. We'll begin this evening's meeting with a proclamation regarding the fact that Dublin has been designated as a bicycle-friendly community from the League of American Bicycleists. Tom Merritt, former Chair of the Bicycle Advisory Task Force, will join me here at the podium to accept the proclamation, and I believe he'll also have something to present to us. Definitely. Well, good evening, Tom. Before I read the proclamation this evening, I would like to point out that this designation makes Dublin the sixth community in the state of Ohio to be named a bronze-level bicycle-friendly community. Others are Cleveland, Columbus, Cincinnati, Dayton, and Westerville. And on behalf of City Council, I'd like to thank you, Tom, and the Bicycle Advisory Task Force members, many of which I know are in the audience this evening, for their 20-plus months of research, discussion, and development of the comprehensive recommendations that Council has adopted. I'd also like to thank Councilmember John Reiner for serving as City Council's representative on the Bicycle Advisory Task Force and for his efforts to initiate this task force. Would also like to thank all the ambassadors, bicycle ambassadors, for their continued efforts to be a presence on our bike paths. You might recognize some of them by their fluorescent vest in the audience, and assisting residents in identifying needed maintenance and repairs. That said, I'd like to read the proclamation, which states as follows: Whereas the city of Dublin has been designated as a bicycle-friendly community by the League of American Bicycleists, and whereas the designation would not have been achieved without the knowledge and commitment of the citizens who served as members of the Dublin Bicycle Advisory Task Force, and whereas the ongoing commitment of Dublin City Council to provide funding for the infrastructure and community initiatives that support the goals of a bicycle-friendly community was a key factor in securing this designation, and whereas the city of Dublin's designation as a bicycle-friendly community will be maintained and approved upon, improved upon, through the continued efforts of the Dublin Bicycle ambassadors, the Community Services Advisory Commission, and city staff, and whereas the city of Dublin recognizes cycling as a popular and important form of transportation and recreation for many residents, and one that promotes healthy living and cleaner air, and whereas the city of Dublin is proud of this recognition and remains committed to supporting and implementing the five E's of a bicycle-friendly community, which are engineering, education, encouragement, enforcement, and evaluation. Now therefore, I Timothy A. Lecliter, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim this Friday, October 18th, as Bicycle Friendly Community Day in the City of Dublin, recognizing the efforts of our many residents who volunteered their time to help Dublin achieve bicycle-friendly community status, and encouraging all residents to bike to work, school, and recreational activities to celebrate the many benefits of cycling.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Member of Council. We appreciate this recognition. If I could ask the members of the Bicycle Advisory Task Force and Bike ambassadors to please stand, just for, we can see you're here this evening. Thank you for your support. Mayor and Member of Council, thank you very much for being responsive to the community and putting together the Bicycle Advisory Task Force. We appreciate that. You listened to the community, and we've got some great ideas. You were receptive to the recommendations we made, and you reacted in a positive way by funding those initiatives, many of which we've seen in our community to date, and certainly it's made Dublin a much nicer place to live, to work, and to bike, and we appreciate your support. And I would like to present you with a Bike Friendly Community sign, and you may hold that up there so everyone can see, but thanks very much, and we appreciate the recognition for this Friday's Bike Friendly Day. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
You've got to be so proud right now.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank City Council, as Tom said, for sponsoring this and seeing that it's executed, and got to say that you guys did yeoman's work in two years and completed the entire bicycle network and exercise network for our entire city. And a lot of that really wasn't planned because our laws came on after a lot of the city was already built. So you did a lot of work putting the whole program together, and I think it's going to be really appreciated, and it's, a lot of it's in the next four-year funding cycle, so... And another thing is that, you know, sometimes we get calls when something tragic happens in our community and someone's hit or injured, and I think working out the details you guys worked out are going to prevent a lot of those calls. You look at some of the safety problems you solved, and I think of Glick Road and running a path along it, and other issues that you worked on are going to prevent some tragedies in the future. So there's a lot of great things you did, and I don't think you even realize it, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom, and thanks to all the members of the task force. We appreciate it.
Mayor, if I could just follow with a few brief comments.
Yes, please.
I wanted to echo the thanks to the Bicycle Advisory Task Force and the Bike ambassadors for their work and ongoing efforts. All the staff that has worked with them has enjoyed it and found it an extremely rewarding experience. But I also wanted to acknowledge a few staff members that have been key in us receiving this designation, and without their efforts, we would not have probably been able to put all this together. The first is Mimi Migliore, who's here this evening. She completed our application for this award. Mimi spent many hours gathering information and meeting with other staff members and also representatives from Considered Biking to ensure a well-written and accurate application was submitted. She probably knows more about cycling in Dublin now than any other staff member, and she started knowing next to nothing. Also, thank you to Christine Ardakia, who led a cross-divisional team within the city to develop our Bicycle Ambassador program. We now have 40 ambassadors, and we're likely to reach 50 in the coming year. Very proud of that program as well. And also thanks to Corporal Kiefer, Kevin Kiefer and Renee Rice, who are also here this evening. In fact, I think they rode their bikes this evening. They have been incredibly supportive to the Bicycle Ambassador program, assisted in the training and ongoing communication with ambassadors, and one of them has been at every event or meeting that we held with this group of resident volunteers, and they've been active in so many other biking efforts with our residents as well. And finally, thanks to City Council for the support you've shown. Without the ongoing capital improvements and operating expenses, we really couldn't have made this happen. We received a bronze designation this time, and the next step is silver.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, moving on in our agenda to the consent agenda portion of this evening's meeting. We have six items listed. I was asked, council members, if they have any desire to remove any of those six items? Any comments? Hearing none, I would move that we approve the actions for the six items listed on tonight's consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Ann, if you'd call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Moving on then to the second reading of ordinances, beginning with ordinance 75-13.
Appropriating a 1.836 acre more or less fee simple interest, a 0.673 acre more or less utility easement, and a 0.088 acre more or less temporary construction easement from the Thomas Family Limited Partnership.
Good evening, Mr. McDaniel.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Nothing really to add to ordinances 75 or 76, other than what was presented to you at your last council meeting. I would add that, or state that our dialogue continues with this family for the purchase of this property. Also, this property is a reminder, is related to Emerald Parkway Phase 8, the final leg of Emerald Parkway to be constructed. They did grant us a right of entry, so we would be able to get on there and start construction. Bidding will happen in November, and we hope to have that bid to you in early December for your, hopefully for your approval, and hopefully get Emerald Parkway Phase 8 under construction, even over the wintertime with utility work. So other than that, no other comments.
Council, have any questions or comments? Hearing none, Ann, if you'd call for the vote on 75-13.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes. Thank you. And ordinance 76-13?
Appropriating a 0.300 acre more or less fee simple interest with 0.234 acre more or less encumbered, as present or occupied from the Thomas Family Limited Partnership.
Anything else to add on that, Mr. McDaniel?
Nothing to add, Mayor.
I was just a little confused. Are we requesting emergency, an emergency vote on that this evening? Okay. All right, very good. If there are no questions or comments, Ann, if you'd call for the vote on 76-13?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring. Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes. Thank you. Order 77-13?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a five-year extension of the lease agreement with the Dublin Chamber of Commerce for the city-owned property at 129 South High Street.
Thank you, Ms. Muma.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As you are aware, the city owns property at 129 South High Street that the Chamber of Commerce leases from us. They originally entered into a 20-year lease agreement in 1988, which carried us through 2008, and then in 2008, an appraisal was done of the property, and through negotiations, a five-year lease agreement was established, which indicated that the market value was $12 per square foot, and then provided for discounts for city use as well as public use of the facility. Being that the five years was up, we went ahead and got an updated appraisal of the property, which came back that the market rate was consistent with that which was in place in the 2008 agreement. So we are recommending that council maintain the lease rate at, which comes out to $25,200 annually, or $2,100 monthly, for the upcoming five-year period with the Dublin Chamber of Commerce. We have worked with the executive director of the chamber, Ms. Margie Amoros, and she is here this evening, if there are any questions from the chamber's behalf that council has.
Ms. Amoros, if you're in the audience, I'm sorry, I can't see you, but if you'd like to come forward. Good evening.
Hi.
Any comment regarding the...
No, we're kind of settled in at this point, so we'd like to renew.
How long has the chamber been there?
Since 1988.
Since 1988, okay.
So we really are settled in.
Yeah, I guess you are. I guess you are.
It's been 25 years in that building.
Time flies.
Scare me, and I'm fearless.
Right. Council members have any questions or comments, either to Ms. Muma or Ms. Amoros? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ann, if you'd call for the vote, please.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Great, thank you.
I just want to thank Ms. Amoros and the chamber for all the work that you do in our community. I've had a couple new business owners ask me, you know, "Do you think I should join the chamber?" And I always say, "Oh, absolutely." And they do, and then they come back and say, "That was best advice." It's really, really helpful, so thank you for all the work you do. Please share that with your staff.
Moving on to the resolution portion of tonight's agenda, beginning with Resolution 61-13.
Intend to appropriate a 1.437 acre more or less fee simple interest from Peace Hansen LLC for the purpose of the realignment of Riverside Drive.
Introduction, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
Yes, as mentioned in the memo for the legislation, this is for the acquisition of 6570 Riverside Drive, and it's for, it's a property that's needed for the future realignment of Riverside Drive that was included and approved by City Council in your five-year CIP that was adopted last September, and this property is needed for that relocation, and we've continued to have good conversation with the property owner. Terry Fogler had a conversation with them last week to let them know that we would be starting this process, and the legislation would have a first reading this evening, and after the, or the resolution this evening, after the resolution, we will send out the notice of intent and good faith letter offer to the residents, as required as part of any eminent domain process, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to resolve and come to an agreement with the property owner on the price. Basically, what this does, it provides formal notice to the property owner, and especially is important from a standpoint that it's a business that needs time to relocate, and it also puts the city in a position to be ready to start the project once we're ready to go with detailed design and construction contract.
Very good, thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing none, Ann, if you'd call for the vote, please.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring. Mayor Lecliter.
Yes. Thank you. Resolution 62-13?
Intend to appropriate a 0.224 acre more or less fee simple interest from Jen Joss LLC for the purpose of the realignment of Riverside Drive.
Thank you. Introduction, please. Thank you.
This is the same explanation as for the previous resolution, just a different property owner, and the property is located at 6694 Riverside Drive. Dana McDaniel has continued to have a conversation with this property owner, and they were made aware that we would be having this legislation on this evening, and we would ask for adoption tonight.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Ann, if you'd call for the vote.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Thank you. Well, breezing right through the agenda. We're nearing the end already. Fortunately for all the students in the audience. But you did a nice job on the pledge of allegiance. Next up is an update regarding the I-27033 interchange aesthetics. Ms. Ott, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. I just want to take a brief moment to provide you an update on 27033, and I'd like to recognize my partner in this project, who's been extremely helpful throughout the way, and that's David Guon with the Dublin Arts Council, who will also be addressing you briefly this evening in conjunction with myself with this update. There's two areas I really would like to spend a few moments on. First, I'd like to update you where we are on the landscape and hardscape design of the project. After hiring CT consultants in the Edge Group through a competitive selection process, three conceptual landscape design plans were presented to a stakeholders' group, and from that stakeholders' group, the preferred landscape concept, as you see presented on the screen, was selected for advancement into intermediate design. There are some features of this particular design that we felt were compelling that raised it above the other concepts presented to us. First is it embraced the unique geometry that will be created by the final project. Secondly, it added some interesting elements with its use of a grid-like pattern. As you can see from the information from the designers, they felt like looking at the aerials of our community, that there is a real opportunity to provide some symbolism that tied to our roots in the final design work, as well as recognize that there's some contemporary elements to the design. We also, from that selection committee perspective, liked the flexibility this provided when it came to the imagery that may come forward, and the bridges and parapets and retaining walls that is currently under development. Here are some of the images also, by the way, related back to the landscape design that provided some of the research component of that coming up, that particular perspective. When looking at the interchange, we are talking about over 100 acres of land. We have over 50,000 square feet of retaining wall. We have nine bridges and various other elements to the infrastructure improvements. And figuring out how to make a signature look in this area with landscape seemed to not be adequate, that we needed to step a little bit beyond landscape and look at those infrastructure elements. The city has engaged Stephen Weitzman of Creative Design Resolutions to assist us with that, both in Phase 1 for preliminary, intermediate, and final design, and in Phase 2, a preliminary design. Mr. Weitzman met with approximately 80 residents earlier this fall to garner their input on Dublin's identity and potential imagery that could be captured and translated into the infrastructure with this project. Additionally, we've continued to receive a great response online with over 30 residents. Last week, I think we're probably up to about 40 as of today, submitting ideas and concepts to questions he posed about what is Dublin, what makes it unique, what's important to our residents in our community. CDR is currently working on three designs now that will be brought back to the community in November for presentation and selection. One of those designs needs to be selected around November 22nd to move forward for intermediate design. David Guon and I have had a lot of conversation about how do you narrow these three concepts down to one, and how do we do it in the expedited timeframe that we're on to meet the Ohio Department of Transportation's construction schedule. And with that, we're recommending a selection committee be established that can help garner the feedback on design elements, distill the community input from focus groups and online, as well as the community's response to the three concepts, to make a recommendation to ODOT. I've outlined for you in your memo a schedule that includes me making a brief presentation of those concepts to you as well at one of your council meetings, and entrusting the citizen group to come up with the final recommendation to go forward to ODOT. With that, I just want to turn it over to David to make a few remarks, and ultimately I'd like to close, seeking some direction from council about whether you wish to move forward with this approach, or have other suggestions about how we would go forward making that final selection.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Yeah, I think the selection committee at this point is a really great way to move forward. It is something that's done nationally, so it's not unusual for particular municipalities across the country. We've outlined some goals and outcomes after meeting with the staff and meeting with Sarah and other city staff, and I think we're set to move forward. I think Stephen Weitzman is a great choice for the artist, and I think he'll work very carefully and closely, as he's done in the community engagement meetings.
Questions or comments?
What is the timeline again? How fast do you have to come back with an answer for ODOT?
We need to move to intermediate design by November 22nd, and we're anticipating the community presentations on November 13th.
The only concern that I had, it's not maybe a concern, is too strong of a word, but because of the timeframe largely, the people that would be appointed to this committee need to be people who have been involved, in my mind, in the process already, and not just coming in cold, because they, you know, if they didn't participate in one of these meetings and have been involved in some kind of discussions about this, since it's something we have not done before and is an unusual project, and we have, you know, six weeks basically to make the final recommendation, we need people that are already on board with understanding it, in my mind. That would just be my, you know, one of my thoughts, is to bringing people on to that committee that have been participating, at least.
I agree with Mary Lee. Mary Lee and I both went to the first session, and I was very impressed with this artist she selected. It sounds like he knew the questions, and he will be able, from what he's shown us, to be interpretive of these, all these things that were said, which I don't know how you do that, but I have confidence in him. But I agree with Mary Lee that unless you've been in one of these meetings and had the privilege of listening to the community discussions, I think it might be a little difficult to, you know, you might come in with your own ideas rather than the community's ideas, which I think is important. But nice job on the selection of artists.
Other comments, questions?
We'd like to bring back to you some recommendations at your next meeting for appointment. We have some ideas based upon who's been engaged thus far, of who could fulfill that role, particularly having some experience or aptitude for digesting a broad array of opinions in the community and distilling that into a meaningful decision.
Okay.
Well, thank you for all your efforts up to this point. I appreciate the summary that was provided to council, you know, for me, anyway. I think, you know, captured the discussion and the input that was offered, and, you know, was certainly helpful to me, and I feel good about the direction in which we're headed, albeit at a pretty fast pace, which is a good thing.
It is good.
Which is a very good thing, so. I also just want to say, a number of people have asked, and I know we're talking about, you know, the landscaping and aesthetic design portion of this, but the interchange design is on the website. I mean, and it's difficult to explain to somebody, you know, in a casual conversation, you know, where this ramp is going and this loop and so forth, but I would encourage people to go to the city's website and, excuse me?
I think it's good.
Yeah, please go to the city's website, you know, to see what's, you know, what's planned for the improvement to this interchange. Thank you. Then the final matter on this evening's agenda is the adoption of council's 2014 regular meeting scheduled, scheduled, excuse me. There's a proposal that's been presented to all of us. I'll just kick off the discussion here. Generally speaking, council meets the second and fourth Mondays of every month, and the proposal before us carries that forward into 2014, with the exception of the months of April, May, and November, where the proposal is to meet the first and third Mondays in those particular three months. And just for the sake of discussion, I would agree with respect to May and November, but I'm not so sure about April. Is there a reason why we can't meet the second and fourth Monday in April? As would normally be the case. I know we're working around some holidays there and so forth.
It's marked the second and fourth.
Excuse me?
It's marked the 7th and 21st, which is the second and fourth. Well, I guess it's different on this calendar.
Right, it is.
So it's just been a mistake on the other calendar.
Yeah.
Because here it shows it correctly.
Right, yeah. I mean, one of the questions in my mind when I was reviewing this was whether there was a conflict with Dublin Schools' break, and that's not the case.
I think it's just an error.
That conflict is in March.
Okay.
Isn't it just an error? The March 24th meeting. I don't know if, Ann, if there was, in May, we've adjusted the meetings to the first and third because of the tournament, I believe. So I don't know if that's why April was then adjusted.
And the APA conference was the 28th of April, and so that was another reason, and just to keep the meetings, you know, the spacing of them, for the most part, as much as we could, not one week apart, I think.
So this is not accurate, then?
This may not be accurate.
So, I mean, one or the other is not accurate.
Which one is it?
Yeah.
I don't have any say in this, but I will. I think for the public...
Oh, come on.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
For the public, it's like they go back and forth. They got to look at the month to see if it's first and third, or second and fourth. They gotta look at the month to see if it's first and third, or second and fourth. So I think it would be nice to have as many second and fourths as you can, because there's obvious some other reasons why you don't.
It's very similar to what we did this year. Yeah, that's what our basis was.
I know. And we all missed the final four this year, too.
So, Anne, so this year, 2013, it was April, May, and November that we met the first and third Mondays?
Well, I can look at our calendar.
No.
No.
No, okay.
Not on the, no.
Okay, and it shouldn't be this.
Yeah, this year we meet the first and the third in November. Is that what your question was?
Well, I was asking about April as well.
I'd have to look back at that, sorry. We don't have to act on this tonight, you can postpone it till the next meeting.
Okay, all right.
Just get a chance to take a look at it, and we'll work on it again.
Okay.
That's fine.
That's fine. Yeah, if we could get everything on this identical, on both the calendar and the verbiage, that would be helpful.
All right. The only question I had, Tim, was on March 24th, that being the first day of spring break for Dublin Schools. I don't know if that would be a problem for anybody, but sometimes it has in the past.
Okay.
Just a lot of the community travels and is out of town, that's the only.
They don't care.
Okay.
They don't come anyway.
Well, Anne, with those thoughts in mind, let's get this on to the next agenda.
Sure.
Hopefully we'll make a final decision then. Okay?
Yes.
All right, moving on then to staff comments.
A couple of quick items. The first one relates to the meeting next Tuesday, October 22nd, at OCLC. It's the Bridge Street Community Forum. That's been discussed, it was mentioned at the last council meeting in the staff comments, and information was sent out today to numerous different groups and individuals, people that sign up for the e-newsletter, to let them know about the meeting and with the agenda, and that information was provided at your desk this evening as well. And then the other thing is to just make a couple of quick comments from a staff perspective with regard to the President's Cup. And I would just like to personally, or publicly, I guess, thank city council for the support that we had in all of the activities during the week and leading up to the President's Cup. It was a big event for the city, and it impacted work units across the city. And then also to recognize all of the city staff over the past year, the efforts that were made in planning and programming this event, and then also especially the work in cleaning up the city and getting everything completed, similar to what we do every spring, the police department and all of their efforts. It takes a lot of time and individual hours that are dedicated to an event like this, community relations for their work throughout the year and all the coordination. So I just think that one of the things that we've talked about at staff and council level was the fact that the President's Cup was such a great opportunity for the city and the community to showcase the community, and I think it turned out very well, and just that happened. We provided a great experience for those who came and participated and visited. The only problem is, the only thing that we didn't have influence over, or that we could do anything about, was the weather. And we all know it was a little wet that week, but other than that, I think staff should be congratulated on all of the efforts and the work that they did to help make this a successful event, and we appreciate the partnership and work with the Memorial Tournament and their staff as well.
Thank you. Was there anything else?
That's it.
Great. Rick, you want to start council roundtable, please?
Sure. I think all seven of us are going to say something about the President's Cup. I was very much impressed with staff, and Marcia, you hit it on the head, particularly with the Four Fest and just all the work that they did. Presidents came up during that event and were so appreciative and so amazed of what we were able to do in this city. So, again, thank you, staff, and job well done. I just want to make sure that we, on the agenda for October 28th, we talked about the Planning and Zoning Commission. They were charged with, excuse me, with kind of doing a review of the Bridge Street Corridor. You know, like, I understand they completed that report last Thursday, and looking at our calendar and looking at the fact that some of us may not be here at some meetings in December and November, it seemed to me it might make some sense to get that on the agenda for October 28th, get the ball rolling, so to speak. I'm sure staff may have some comments and want to have some input, but I thought it may make some sense, as we asked P&amp;Z to look into this, that I'm sure as we look through the report, we're going to have questions, and we'll ask staff to help us sort through that. So I'd kind of like to see it on the agenda for the 28th if we could.
Yeah, and I know the review or the discussion was held at the last P&amp;Z meeting, so it will just be a matter of getting the minutes transcribed, and we, I would think that we should be able to do that. I know there was previous discussion about the desire to have follow-up at the October 28th meeting, so I'm assuming that that's.
Right, yeah. They briefed this morning that they would be at the next council meeting, so that's the plan.
Perfect. Great, thank you. Anything else, Rick?
That's all.
Great, thank you. John?
No, I agree with Rick. It was really an impressive endeavor, and I am sorry about the weather, but it was really, I think, pretty exciting, and millions of people getting a chance to see Dublin was just a wonderful opportunity to showcase their city, and all the comments were positive. I just want to say, and I don't know if anyone's, Tim, if you've had the chance to meet the council general from Japan yet?
No, I haven't.
Yeah, I was reading his letter, and I think, a couple notes in here. He said, "It's a great joy and honor for me to come back to the U.S. in my favorite country," which I thought was very positive, seeing how many different foreign posts this gentleman hailed across the world. And then the other comment was, "I am to create as many, my aim is to create as many Japan fans as possible amongst the Americans, and we are truly looking for a partnership." And I just hope that maybe we'd have the opportunity to restart the Japanese festival with this new personality in our midst, so I'm pretty excited about that. And again, I want to thank the Bicycle Task Force, because they just did a great job, and have been on a lot of committees in 16 years, and that was a really fun committee, because the people, they had the energy, the drive, the ambition, you knew they were going to do something great, and they actually produced, after two years, a great set of documents that elevated us to some of the really cool cities that people, young people, want to move to. And the economics of that is very important for us, because kids now graduate from college, and they want to, they take their degree and move to where they want to be, and it's very important for us to create that environment here in our own city, that this is a place to come back to, and along with the Bridge Street Corridor and walkable communities and things. I think the bicycle component is really, really important, because the young people are very environmentally oriented, they want to have one car, they want to be able to ride or walk to work, so I just think that, I really appreciate the effort that our citizens put into this, for looking forward for our community. So, thank you.
Thanks, John. Mary Lee?
Yes, earlier this evening, we held a finance committee meeting, and I'm happy to report that the city is projecting a 4% increase in 2013 in our income tax, and so we're feeling very positive right now about our financial environment. We also reviewed the recommendations for improving and updating our investment policy, and that will come to us at our next council meeting as the first reading of an ordinance. Also, as you know, I sit on the MORPC board, and the MORPC board has recommended bylaw changes to their organization, but because their organization is membership-based, it is all of us who are members who need to approve those changes. So we'll be bringing forward a resolution or an ordinance to that effect as well in later, that next semester.
Yeah, we'll either do it this next meeting or the first meeting in November.
Okay. At both the OML conference, I'm also sitting on that board in their fall conference, took place in the last couple of weeks, and both at MORPC and at OML, needless to say, a major discussion continues to be the House Bill, Senate Bill 5, and what, House Bill 5 and what might happen with that. So, as you know, Fay Gibson, our tax administrator, has been extremely active in this area and working closely with our representatives to discuss the impact of any of the potential things that are being recommended to cities and other forms of municipalities in the state. So I think that the intent of Representative Grossman and Beck is to have a bill voted on by the end of this calendar year, but we haven't seen new wording yet to be able to be responsive to that. Also, two documents that are available. One is this new food district campaign that is about bi-local and all this kind of thing, and we can get MORPC as one of the people in it, and we can get this. This is the district that's over there by Godman Guild in Wyland Park, and what they've set up is the new food distribution, how to process food that they'll be then selling at, or giving away at food pantries and all. So it's really a very interesting project for people to learn more about. And then MORPC has a new, brand-new off-the-press, new newsletter for transportation, and also, Anne, I think you could request copies from MORPC, it's probably online as well, to give to all of council. As you know, you've been getting the Regional Planning Commission's monthly legislative update that Anne has been forwarding to you. I think that's, oh, one of the things that was passed out at the MORPC meeting last week, you will recall that the Community Research Partners does a benchmarking of central Ohio generally every two years, and so they just came out with their summary, and this is comparing our region with regions in similar kinds of cities that we like to compare ourselves to. And I would recommend that we consider having Lynette Cook, Dr. Lynette Cook is the new Director of Community Research Partners, and we might invite her to come and speak to give us the highlights of the results of this report before, you know, at the beginning of a council meeting, as it really begins to shape how economic development might strategize and cultural arts and all for the future of the individual cities as well as the region. Thank you.
Mary Lee, I just want to remind the public that the city's financial audit that you referenced will be available on the city's website. How soon?
Should be able to have it out there tomorrow or the next day. It'll be very soon.
Okay. So if you want to take a look at that, go to the city's website. Thank you. Kathy?
I'm going to repeat what Marcia said, but from my point of view. From the very beginning, from the dedication of the Bri-Hi Square to the Four Fest, to the most memorable golf moments, to the public golf ball for the playing through, to the, the Four Fest was really, that was a big thing. I am starting to believe in the curse of leather lips, because Wednesday night was wonderful, Thursday night was wonderful, and it was just, you know, while we were at the golf course. It was all the staff who started this from beginning to end a couple of years ago, it was a fantastic opportunity, a lot of positive comments from the community, a lot of fun in spite of the rain, and it was just something different that I really think that people appreciate. The one thing we've all had comments on is that the Four Fest is something that the public does not want to happen just one time. So in that case, I would hope that the staff might think about it, I know they're busy, but it's been something that we've all had comments about, that we really, really like it. I know there were a few glitches, but each time we have it, and that's one of the problems of being in a successful community. You do something well, and they won it again. So congratulations to the staff. I would like to also thank most of the candidates for not putting up their signs before the tournament. I appreciate that, it looked nicer. And considering signs, Steve, there's some confusion still out there about how long they can stay out and what the local policies are.
Well, you know, under the First Amendment now, you can put a sign up in your yard tomorrow, say Kathy Boring is a councilperson, or served on council for X number of years, and is going to run in 2015. I mean, we just don't, we used to restrict signage, we used to have them up 30 days, but those have all been tested in the courts, and now, you know, most, we do get those signs down. Candidates have all been, in the past, been very good about following the election within a matter of days, cleaning up all their signs. So that's never been a problem, but I've talked to four or five people that are candidates, and some did have questions, and I explained it to all of them, that their signs could go up, as long as they're not in the right of way, and as long as they have permission from the folks whose yards they're putting them in. So we've tried to get that out. I know that Stephen and Jennifer both talked to some folks, too, that called in, because they wanted to be sure they were doing it right. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all, thank you.
Amy?
Obviously echo everything everybody said about the President's Cup, and especially about Four Fest. The only thing I heard that night is, "This is so awesome, we've got to do it every year." And I shared that with Allison that evening, and I think she wanted to hit me. So, but it was very, very well received, and I don't know that that's something that we can do every year, but it was certainly a wonderful time to come together as a community. I think everybody enjoyed it. One thing I wanted to bring to the community's attention, and it's good that there are a lot of young people in the audience, because this event is for them, as well as their parents. P-E-R-C, Perk, Parents Encouraging Responsible Choices, is going to have a program Wednesday, October 23rd. They're having two sessions at the Rec Center. One is in the morning, I believe, 9:00, 9:30, they started. I couldn't get the exact times, but it will be on their website. And then also in the evening, usually they start at 7:00. And this particular program deals with safe relationships and dating, and it's about dating, relationship violence, abuse prevention, and the fact is, a lot of young people deal with dating abuse, and we want to be able to prevent that and allow our young people to understand that, you know, what's okay and what's not okay, and parents hopefully to recognize warning signs in the youth, that this might be an issue, and just empower our teens to be able to prevent that sort of activity, because obviously it's very damaging. And that's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, likewise, I would like to compliment everybody involved with the President's Cup, including the residents. I'd like to compliment residents on their support and patience throughout the course of this event, and, you know, those of us that have been involved in the Memorial Golf Tournament for many years now, when you, whether you're up at the golf tournament or elsewhere in the community, you recognize, as do the organizers of these events, that it couldn't take place, you know, without the significant contribution from the residents in our community. And, you know, you can't, you can't go to that tournament, and this tournament included, without seeing your friends and neighbors there, supporting the event, and, you know, were recognized for the volunteerism and the volunteer spirit that exists within this community. Also, compliments to the staff, of course, did their usual outstanding work, you know, but it deserves to be, to be recognized, but it was a community-wide effort which brought not only national but worldwide attention to our community, and something that we should all be proud of. So, that's it for this evening, and we're adjourned. Thank you.